At previous meeting, a detail of the market funding in total for Macon County. I have that out to give this to the board at this time. This provides the summary and of course, we're happy to provide any additional details as the board would request. Macon County grand total received 7.85 million. And that is the 6.96 million that was received through the county overall, as well as 178,952 dollars in housing, 547,252 dollars in public health, and 164,350 dollars in transit. I'm going to pass that summary out to you at this time and again, happy to provide any details. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion for Chairman of Macon County Board of Commissioners.
All right, I would, actually before we get started, let me just make a quick announcement. For my apologies ahead of time, I just recently had surgery. So the chance of me laughing for the entire meeting tonight is probably going to be pretty slim to none. So I will stay as long as I can, but as soon as that pain starts hitting, I will be editing. I'll try my best to be destructive, so thank you guys for being patient with me on that. And on that note, are we do, are we do nominating right there?
Yes.
Okay. I would like to present to the board, I got to nominate Josh Young for our chairman for this year.
Okay, we have a, we have a nomination, go here a second. Okay, here none, that motion will die for lack of a second. I will now at this time entertain a motion for Chairman of the Macon County Board of Commissioners.
Mr. Manager, I hold a few of these guys up here and we think it's a good thing maybe to change leadership every year. It's not impressive we've had, but I talked to these gentlemen and Mr. Gary Shields expressed a great interest in serving as Chairman of this board, an old guy for sixty seven years. Both men have a lot in common, I respect him greatly. And with that being said, it's been an honor to serve this last year and trying to get these five independent figures on the same page. Ain't nobody can do that. But we're here to represent the people and I'm glad we have independent thinkers and outspoken individuals here. But it's given me great pride to, great honor to nominate Mr. Gary Shields as Chairman of the board coming here.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Mr. Manager, I'm saying that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Here you're none, congratulations, Mr. Chairman. I get to do it once a year, so. So, okay, we have a motion and a second, here no discussion. I will now call question for Mr. Gary Shields for Chairman of Macon County Board of Commissioners. All members of favor taken by by saying eye and raising your right hand. Let the record reflect unanimous. Congratulations.
It's out of your corporate.
I just heard a thump, two thumps. My momma did it, turned on the grave. Tristan, I'd like to make a question, I'm really glad, Chair. Thank you, you have it forward, mention.
Second.
You have a discussion or anything? No, let me take it, but, yes, sir. Paul and Green.
I'll be pulling two pairs of glasses out. Can you move the microphone closer, please? Oh, I'm here, thank you, thank you. Had to wear surgery in both eyes, so I have to have these read, and I have these to see back there.
Just so you can think in both directions.
I hear a thump at the top. Let's see where we are. The affirmation of the 2024 regular meeting schedule. Then you got a copy of that in your folder.
I'll say this figure with a copy of this part of the meeting.
Okay, nobody have a copy? No time to launch it, to accept this, so you got 2024 meeting date and the addenda item due date. Macon County Board of Commissioners 2024 regular meeting schedule, so Mr. Chairman. Second. More discussion.
I don't know that it's really that important, but last year, Commissioner Antoine, the February meeting is on Thursday. Does that, it's on Thursday, oh, I'm sorry, sorry. Yeah, we're agreeing, sorry.
Okay, in more discussion. Not to vote, by raising your right hand, with I. Go on, do six and seven. On the silent complaint in the media, sir. That's there, everybody will say, the object, please. No public hearing. Public comment period. One thing that, for the last couple of weeks, that Antoine, he's been done. To the hip surgery, we didn't even talk with him before, and the rest of us haven't even meet one on one. We felt like if we need to look at the public comment period that's in our book to make sure that we're going through the policy that's in here. I think the thing that taught I the most, we wanted to make sure, I'm not saying we have it in here, but it's down standards, guideline for public comment. I'm having a hard time seeing that clock back there, I was thinking about seventeen acres. But anyway, we'll have a total of forty five minutes to be allowed into the public comment period. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes. Speakers will be taken on a first come, first served basis by using the sign up sheet. Topics must be related to Macon County only. Action by the board members on topics is not to be expected. So if you're bringing something forward and you're expecting us to act on it, we won't be. You'll be also speaking to the board, not individuals, address us as the board, and also the board in this situation right now will not be interacting with the questionnaires or the speakers, who may be, the board will not react, we're going to listen what you have to say. And so, and I just saw these a few days ago and didn't know where to land tonight. That's what we go by this meeting here. Did we have any sign up for people?
Yes, sir, anyone else like to sign up for public comment? Folks, I'd like to make an announcement as well. Any outburst will not be tolerated, we're going to keep this civil. I've spoke to Mr. Shields prior to this meeting. If, if that does continue like it has in months past, you'll be asked to leave, thank you.
Well, right off, Mr. Chairman, I get to say congratulations. On an election that all of us are very pleased about. But thank you, Mr. Higgin, you have been an excellent chairman, despite my efforts to give you grief. Thank you. I was very disappointed to hear that the proposal I've made for setting aside a viewscape for Macon residents was virtually sneered at. I was told that it was not a project that you all would be interested in. So I am here today to convince you otherwise. Is there anybody here that does not remember Charlie? God, what was his last name? I knew it through all my rehearsals and now.
What birthday?
He was the chairman in 2008, Charlie.
Charles.
Charles Levitt, is there anybody here that doesn't know? I, that is, I suspected, and I have a fun story to relate, where Charlie was listening to a presentation I made and I had brought in a very large photograph of a barn and a oak tree that I was using as a demonstration point. And after the talk was done, Charlie reached over and he said, "Let me see that picture." And he brought it up to the dais and said, "Boy, that is a gorgeous, gorgeous picture. Where is that, Charlie?" And I said, "Charlie, that is your front yard, it's your barn, you pass it every day." What it taught me was that Maconians who grow up here, you get so accustomed to the environs that it takes someone like me coming from Philadelphia in 2001 and realizing, wow, this is a land of wonder, of scenic enrichment, it's just God's gift. But you are slowly letting it fritter away. And let me show the audience one of the examples of which I speak. Does anybody out there remember this? Do you know where that is? It was called Frog Town. And many of you grew up watching your first drive in movie and probably having your first kiss in Frog Town. There are now five buildings on it. You don't even understand that, perceive that it's gone. And, yes?
Could you speak to the board, please, not the audience, thank you.
Following your directions, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Sherrill, can you recognize this? This, everybody, is a scenic wonder in Highland that locals and visitors alike are anxious to go see, it's called Sunset Rock. I cannot take that picture anymore because as iconic as that tree is, there are now six buildings that have been put on that hillside, so it's lost forever. You still have a chance to save this. Regrettably, the woman that owned this property was dying and I did not have a chance to ever show her this. But this is the most iconic view, not in Macon County, not in North Carolina, but very possibly in the eastern US. If you are on Route 40 and going toward Raleigh, you get a magnificent vista coming down mountain. When you are coming from Hayesville and you get to the ice cliffs, there is that turnoff that is very expensive in Macon County. Very quickly, you must talk to Paul Pasetti and get the new owners to lower their houses so that people do not see it when they're on Route 28.
Thank you very much. Where's my helper? I'll help you, wait. Angela Lars?
Good evening, congratulations. I just want to bring up something that happened in last month's meeting and I had to leave early. I guess it's a good thing I left early, I'd probably be in Brent's motel. But on behalf of a lot of citizens in Macon County, and you know me, I speak my mind, I stand for what I believe is true. But a lot of us feels that publicly, John, you owe Derek an apology. We just feel like there should be an apology publicly coming. You know, if you had nine thousand people come in this room and said hateful things, it wouldn't be pleasant. We need to be pleasant, whether, whether we like one another, or we agree with one another, or we don't agree with one another, we still need to be pleasant and civil and respectful. That's all I have to say.
I mean, just taking a moment here to share what we've been doing the last couple of weeks. A couple of weeks ago, I called Mr. Higgin, Chairman Higgin at that time, and asked if we could all.
Can hear you. Can't hear you.
What about that?
Yes.
All right. Couple of weeks ago, I called Mr. Hick, Chairman Hick at that time, and requested another opportunity to speak with our other commissioners individually, he admitted that. And also included seven of them. So we spent two weeks working with each other individually. Mr. Antoine would say on the phone, because he had his surgery. But one thing we concluded with is that we will agree to disagree in a respectful manner. And that's what you were alluding to there, and we all agree that. And I'm going to let John Sherrill tell you what, maybe your family or your children, what you said, something very short that he shared with us in a committee as we went through this. And what he shared there with us was 100% truth, John, do you remember that?
Sure do. In that meeting, I stated it several months ago, that my kids have always told me, they said, "Dad, it's not what you said, it's how you said it." And I agree with that 100%, I have an issue, but I'm okay. If you back me in a corner. And when I come out of that corner, it's going to get ugly. I'm not going to crumble, I'm not going to bow down to whatever. But I assure you that when I come out of that corner, it's not going to be pleasant. And in my mind, I was backed in a corner and that's not where I want to be. And, Mr. Chairman, I did write a statement that I would like to give after the public comment session. In fact, that will be okay.
Don't let me forget it.
Thank you.
Thank you. We've talked about a lot of things, some of the good things, how we're going to improve, those type of things. And this is one area that we're going to focus on. And that's why we, we want you to speak to us, don't speak to the audience out there, speak to us and when we can tune in to you. And also, we won't get into interactive piece with you, because you're speaking to us. All right, thank you, Ms. Lars, Linda Tyler.
Good evening, Linda Tyler, as he said, can you hear me? All right, I just wanted to speak to all of the commissioners this evening to say a couple of things. First, I hope that you will take a vote to appoint Ms. Mark McLaughlin to the applicant that was previously proposed by the Hudson Library Board to fill our open seat on the Macon County Public Library Board, because we need a full board to do what we are called to do. I also asked the commissioners to share the draft of the new Fontana Regional Library Agreement that you developed with the Fontana Regional Library, sorry, Regional Library Board, and to discuss with them the changes you proposed. They may have some information that would be helpful. Also, I want to say that personally, I do oppose the resolution to make our school board partisan race. We will learn a lot more about candidates' views and ideas, I think, by talking to them or reading what they have to say about the school board and what they think should be done for our citizens here than by looking at a letter that calls their name. And voters who don't want to take the time to read or listen to the candidates should consider whether they are making an informed decision. As was discussed at last month's meeting, one of the main reasons for making this change is that some people didn't read the instructions on their ballot at the last election and therefore voted incorrectly and were unwilling to take the time to correct the error. And that doesn't seem like a good reason to change the rules to me. Also, keep in mind that one of the stated reasons for the proposed change is that about 50% of the counties in North Carolina have a partisan school board race. That means that about 50% of the counties don't have a partisan school board race, which I think is worth keeping in mind, thank you.
Good evening, board. I like to stand on this side when I don't have to answer to you guys sometimes. However, I know you have a hard job and there's a couple of things that I'd like to bring to the board's attention. This time of year, we're thinking about the budget for coming years, but one of them is going to be that. The other two are these two elections we're talking about. The first one on the Board of Commissioners, if the resolution goes any further than state, there will have to be, and I think the public deserves that it be a total public hearing on that because Highlands and Nana Haven right now have the representatives of those areas, which represents a couple thousand voters. The reason we have two at large in Franklin area, we have thirty three, four thousand people down here. So percentage wise, you'd have to vod the county up for a fair representation. Second, on the Board of Education, you know, I really don't want my children and the children in Macon County be controlled by if Democrat or Republican. I worked for the county for thirty five years, five Democrats hired me, five retired men were Republicans. I worked with three twos, four ones, all the way through. We are citizens of Macon County, our children are here to get an education and we should provide the best regardless of your affiliation. And third thing I like to say, I read in some social media today about the arts programs and the middle school and that. You know, every child going through school may not be a ball player, they may not be an artist, they may not be a welder, but we are in the education business to demonstrate different areas that their talents are. There's some very fine artists in this county, musicians, artists, sculptors, people that does all kinds of things. But if our child is not exposed to these things, then it's going to be detrimental. Arts, as I found out today from the school board, a lot of that is having to be picked up by the county commissioners because the state only gives us like four positions for everything. So if you've got an art teacher going through three schools, they may get an hour a day at a school by time of driving and all that. We need to step up, we need to do better for our children. Again, I believe our responsibilities start at the very youngest and go to the very oldest. And it is budget issues, but I do hope you consider those things. I know it's hard, but we need to think and plan ahead, thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm Hillary Wilks, member of the Macon County Board of Education. And tonight, I am here to speak on behalf of our full board in regard to the potential resolution discussed at your last meeting to change our seats from non-partisan to partisan. Thank you for making the decision to table your resolution and tell our board at an opportunity to discuss and weigh in on this issue. At our November meeting, we each shared our thoughts. And we all share an opposition to such a change and have voted unanimously on the following resolution. Whereas recent debate among the Macon County Board of Commissioners held without notice to or input from the Macon County Board of Education with the general public has included the question of whether the county should petition the local delegation to the NC General Assembly for a local act enabling or requiring the Macon County Board of Education to be elected on a partisan basis. And whereas, local interest and concerns have been portrayed as the impetus for supporting such a change, yet recent years demonstrate a widespread political effort with the number of school boards elected in a partisan manner, growing from just 17 of 115 school boards in 2015 to more than 50 after the most recent General Assembly. And whereas, members of the Macon County Board of Education have been elected on a nonpartisan basis since at least 1968. And whereas, if the board were elected in a partisan basis, Macon County citizens who are registered independent or unaffiliated would be required to petition for inclusion on ballots. And pursuant to the Hatch Act, those who are federal employees would be forced to choose between their employment and holding office or even participating in a partisan election for the Board of Education. And whereas, school board members, unlike other elected officials, must bear sole allegiance to the students and parents they serve and not leaders or platforms of specific political parties. And whereas, school boards have the primary responsibility for setting school policy and hiring school teachers and administrators. And neither of these responsibilities should be influenced by political party affiliation. And whereas, educational issues decided by the school boards are nonpartisan issues. And the board's judicial and personnel functions must be nonpartisan. And whereas, the undersigned members believe that our board has functioned well over the past 55 years with nonpartisan elections, affording respectful interaction and appropriate focus on a school board's singular mission, the education of the students of our county. And whereas, injecting party politics into school board elections would shift the focus away from candidates who are singularly committed to the education of Macon County students. And whereas, the focused civil discourse and cooperative spirit exercised by all school board members for the greater good of our community would be harmed by partisan school board elections. Now, therefore, let be resolved that in order to best serve the citizens and students of Macon County, the undersigned members of the Macon County Board of Education hereby respectfully and adamantly request that consideration of any measure to make school board elections partisan in Macon County cease and that the General Assembly refuse to take up any such measure. Signed, Jim Breila for Chair, Melissa Evans, Vice Chair, Deidre Breeden, Stephanie Gassiter, and Hillary Wilks. Thank you.
Is it bestie?
Bestie.
All right.
Hey, don't hey, just base like a turkey. Sheriff finally got it. Sir, we're making progress. Maybe in another couple of years, y'all will get it right. It's all good. Betsy Base is coming up after me, so when she comes up. Yeah, it's just like you base the turkey. And that was, uh, the, sorry, not going to address the crowd, but that was a very moving reasoning there from the Board of Education. And hopefully, I'll be a little bit more coherent this month. Last month, I was kind of out of sorts because I was so worked up and I couldn't read my phone. I decided to type out this stuff this time, so I can hopefully read it. I've got a lot to say, but mostly what I wanted to say was, first of all, thanks, congratulations to our new board chair, vice chair, and thanks for coming. And thanks for allowing us to have these moments where the public can talk. And I think it's very important for the public to be able to address their elected officials. I'm here first to discuss the motion about the Board of Education repartisan. I think we heard a lot of great arguments already against it. I have, and actually, I noticed that both sides of the room were clapping. And both of us in the room haven't been clapping a lot in the last couple of meetings, so that's kind of a really good indication of where the public stands, I think, on the Board of Education. I decided, let's see, I had to leave the last meeting early, yep. Furthermore, if the board candidates are nonpartisan partisan, then why do they show up on the Republicans' ballot list to begin with? If they're nonpartisan, they shouldn't be part of the vote, who to vote for from the Republicans, because they're not running as Republicans. So I think that basis that was used last month as a reason for wanting to do this partisan thing, I think it doesn't really hold water. It sounds like that we're being asked to fix a mistake that really wasn't something that the public had control over. But the bigger concern that I'm here tonight for is that I'd like to ask the commission to do a little bit more research before coming public with future issues. The last couple of issues that have addressed, that we've addressed, in particular the library, seems to be just a wedge that's dividing this community apart. And I think I would like to see us look at more issues that we could do that will bring the community together. It sounds like this education thing is one of them. I'm a lifelong Republican. Some of my friends who are Democrats don't realize that because I've been a Democrat lately. But I've been a lifelong Republican. And I don't see how we got to this point where there's a few people in charge who believe that libraries are trying to push pornography on our children, that these same people are trying to push rules that will prevent the library from promoting any issue that they disagree with, like Black History Month, or Pride Month, or Women's Month. This last month at the library board meeting, they passed some kind of resolution that says that the library won't take any stance on anything. But I'm sure Christmas and Easter are sacred, they'll be fine. As far as chronica and cornza, that'll be up to the morality police because that's going to be a different call altogether. They claim not to want to ban books, but I've seen what's happened in Kansas where they label books trash and then they ban the trash. So we're going to have book bans. This is, that's coming. People might say that it's not going to happen, but it's going to happen because that's what's happening already. I'd be remiss to not call out the Monster Liberty. Just this last week, had a big week. Their vice chair, or no, the chair, the founder, was found guilty of having a bisexual relation with, and in her marriage. And she hasn't stepped down yet, but I'm thinking she's going to step down. The husband was the Democrat, the Republican Party leader of Florida. These people are trying to tell us how to live our lives while at the same time they're living this thing that they're talking down. So these people are hypocrites, okay? So they, they don't, they shouldn't hold, why do they get to say how we live our lives up here in North Carolina when they're, when they're living their lives out of integrity? I don't care what they do. I don't. I embrace gay people. I embrace straight people. I embrace people. You get to be whoever you want. When I grew up, I had buddies named Biggin, Lillian, Skeeter, Booger. Whatever. We called them what they wanted to be called. Now somebody wants to be called a she, or he, or him, or her, it's a big deal. No, it's not a big deal. You don't even have to do that. That's what they say they prefer to be called. So in closing, I just want to say thank you for letting me speak. And just remember that we should all just live like what the sign out behind here on the Presbyterian churchy, where we love our neighbor who doesn't look like you, doesn't think like you, doesn't love like you, doesn't speak like you, doesn't pray like you, doesn't vote like you. But everyone should be welcome.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Mary.
I brought the holiday spirit.
That you did.
I didn't. I was afraid I was going to set off the metal detector out there. Thank goodness Sheriff Holbrooks was there to let me through.
Evening, gentlemen. Betsy Base. I do want to wish you all a Merry Christmas. I'm going to make an assumption that you are Christians. If you're not, then happy Hanukkah. Because we are still in Hanukkah week and we do have Jewish people in our community. And I recognize how difficult your jobs all are. And it's kind of fun that you've mixed it up and now you get to try different jobs on it. And that'll be interesting to see how that plays out. We also have difficult jobs. And that is that I'm fairly certain, as people of integrity, this board is, that you don't want to operate in the dark. I'm fairly certain that you want to serve the public, as was stated earlier this evening, to represent the people. I wrote it down and said it. Name and age, it was what he said. It was great. And, and I think that that's very true. And if that is true, I want to make sure that you represent all of us. And I lose a lot of sleep over the fact that I've got to be here because I'm not always certain that the representation is here for all of us. And I feel now that in my time of my life, I can actually pay attention to what's going on. And so I had a friend in California who lives in a very, very small town, just like our town, Mountain Town. And she said, why do you live in a place that has some of the same issues that I have? And I said, well, I said, we all have the same issues, but I know for a fact that here in Macon County, those people behind me, not looking at their dog, I do, they will take the shirt off their back if you need it. And they will help you. They will plow your driveway. They will help you find your dog. They will help you put a bokker on. They will do whatever it is to help your neighbor. And it gives me goosebumps. I'm probably going to cry because I think that that's very true of where we live. That's why I love it here. Because I know that that's who we are as a people. So how much time have I got? Who's the timekeeper? Two minutes? Okay, good. And so I beg of you to operate under the idea of unity. And so if you put Ds and Rs and whatever else you want on the partisan school board issue, that's not unifying. Gentlemen, let's just call it what it is. It is not unifying. Someone said last month that you should not be afraid of having a D or an R after your name. Well, you know what? Let's judge us all on the merits of the individual. And as has been stated many times, more eloquently than this, you know, I believe that that person who's running, that person who's running, that person's running is a good person and has the children at heart and the needs of the parents at heart. So let's let them continue to do their job as they're doing it and not change how our elections are for the school board. Because that's not unifying. And if you make that choice, we know where you stand on it. And it makes me sad. And it makes me want to take off my holiday spirit because there is no spirit in that. There is no spirit in trying to pull apart the good people of Macon County who want to work together for the good of our children. Merry Christmas. You too.
Paul Scott. You've got 30 seconds.
I will say, Brother Shields, you'll always be brother to me, not sheriff. So, but congratulations. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm against making the Board of Education a partisan office. First, there is little empirical evidence on either side to support any of the claims. Second, if you change it, it will inject party primaries into local school issues, whereas now there may be none. Then you will have school board members acting as traditional partisan politicians rather than as apolitical citizens acting only in the interest of our local schools, students, and our community. There is the potential for political gridlock if you decide to push for a partisan Board of Education. Thank you and congratulations, brother.
Hey, Sheriff, former sheriff.
Good evening. First of all, thank you, Sheriff, for what you said. I'm glad to hear that you're going to put a stop to some of the things that happened last week. I was really glad to see our newly-elected chairman make a statement that he's going to hold people accountable as well and make sure that we follow the rules. And so I'm going to start off by me following the rules. When you say addressing the commissioners, I'm going to be addressing you. But there's somebody that's sitting up there that I'm also going to address that's not a commission. I appreciate the work that all of you do. I appreciate the position that each of you hold. I'm going to talk about something without degrading, without insulting any of my commissioners by name, but I just want to let you know that last month, I went deer hunting and I was at deer camp. And what do you do when you have nothing to do? The last thing you do is watch a five and a half hour county commissioner meeting. But that's exactly what I did. And to be honest with you, it was embarrassing. I mean that with respect, but it was embarrassing. And I think all of you realize that. And that's why at the beginning of tonight's meeting, you've addressed those. And I'm really glad to see that. I'm really glad, and I have to say, Mr. Sherrill, I'm sorry to name you, but you made that comment earlier about you're going to read something a little later. I'm looking forward to reading that because I hope I get to hear something that I'm going to ask all of the commissioners of tonight. And I believe I will because I know you and I know you to be a Christian. So I believe I will hear something positive of what I'm wanting to hear. But what I'd like to do is I would like to address our county manager. I'd like to say something. I've had the opportunity in my 32 years with Sheriff's Office, the last 20, 20 years serving as sheriff, you know, in my 32 years, I've had the opportunity to work with, I believe, five county managers. And I want you to know, Mr. Rollin, of all the county managers I've ever worked with, and I've worked with all of them. I liked all of them. I could work better with some, not with others, but I could work with all of them. There's no county manager that I've ever worked with that worked harder for the citizens of Macon County, which include the employees that work for you, that work for these men. You stood up for us. You stood by us. You corrected us when we were wrong, but you listened to us. And we negotiated and we had discussions, but you always treated us with respect. You never degraded us. You never insulted us. You always spoke to us like the employees that we were and as human beings. And you conducted yourself as a Christian leader. And I appreciate that. And I know that I can speak for a lot of county employees. And I do tonight because a lot of them called me and asked me if I would say something on behalf of county employees. And so I say that on behalf of a lot of people. And I appreciate all the work that you do. I hope by the end of the night that you get a public apology. Because it's okay for us to agree to disagree. It's okay for us, in fact, as voters in Macon County, we don't want you guys to always agree. We want you to have debates. We want you to have true discussions. So a lot of people don't feel like that things were done behind closed doors. And that's what people think. I, I was with a lot of you as a sheriff. I never heard anything done behind closed doors. And I was behind those closed doors a lot of times. And I know exactly what we were doing before these long meetings. We were getting a snack to eat. There was no business being conducted. Paul, I almost never saw you go back there because you didn't want to go back there. You felt like that it looked inappropriate. So you, most of the time, would never go back there. I respect that. Truthfully, I starved to death, so I was glad to get a little bit of food. And the county manager had been pretty tight. So he doesn't have a whole lot of food back there. But when you're here for several hours, it was important for us to be back there to get a little bit of something. In closing, I just want to reiterate again, thank you for the hard work you do there. You're a great county manager. You're a native of this community. You have this community in heart. And if your family is listening, I hope that they hear what I have to say tonight because a whole lot of people feel the same way I do. And they listen to how you were treated last month. And it was embarrassing. I appreciate you. And it was embarrassing. I appreciate you.
Sorry, you're moving on procedure. So, Mr. Manager, uh, we were to close this at this time. That was the last person on the list.
Yes, sir. This time we'll uh, move right along with Shields to, I don't know, ten additions to the agenda.
Let me, let me ask one procedural thing. Mr. Sheriff, she requested that.
Sure, you can comment.
And if I just don't want to have the Bible. Not the revival, but that it was preaching. But we, we got business to take care of. And how do we, have Mr. Sheriff making his comment about other people have, up here to make comments?
Uh, I think we could move that. First thing, you can do it right now. If you was chair and want to give him that privilege, that's your, give him the privilege, which is chair.
The audience is here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Manager, Board. Now I'd like to um, address this board and the people of Macon County about the last commissioners meeting that got a little heated. Each of us love this county and our communities, as all of us desire for Macon County to succeed. I acknowledge that the path to success is often cluttered with different ideas and viewpoints. But at the end of the day, I believe we all want the same thing. Working together sometimes brings conflict. That is simply part of the process. However, I don't want conflict to define Macon County. I do want to define where I stand as an elected official and a taxpayer of Macon County. Tonight, I would like to clear the air about a few issues. Yes, I misspoke at last month's meeting and was wrong about the budget increase, twenty-five million, under Derek Rowland. I'm a mistake. I spoke two days late, as I was thinking about both the fund balance and the budget in the heat of the moment. What I meant to point out was that the fund balance has increased by millions and millions, and the budget has increased millions and millions over the last eight years plus, under Mr. Rowland's management. As usual, the media missed the whole point that the taxpayers of Macon County have got larger government and bigger salaries that the taxpayers experience. Certain media outlets and other groups stir controversy by twisting the narrative instead of reporting on the bigger picture. This bid can be put on any top, any topic when information is purposely left out, because some journalists have the history of making judgments on something without having a clue what had transpired behind the scenes to cause the friction in the first place. Let me be clear that I'm not against any county employee, as the haters falsely claim. We all appreciate their work, the same as we appreciate those in the private sector. I am a retired firefighter, an emergency medical responder, also a high school baseball coach. But none of us are special because of where we work. Again, I have stated I will always be grateful to county employees. If anyone says that I'm against employees, they are lying and causing division. However, I am against overstaffing. The taxpayers should not be paying for what is not needed. I fully support capital improvements that we can afford. There is a cost for everything, and Macon County is forced to live within its means without burden to the taxpayers. The taxpayers are the source of income for Macon County and the county employees. Before we can allocate a single dime to any of the expenditure, we must first get it from the hardworking taxpayers, who I directly represent. Like many in this great county, I'm a lifelong conservative Republican. Believe in God, family, country, and freedom. I will always fight for limited government, less taxes and more freedom. History has taught us the bigger the government equals less freedom and more taxes. I do not desire to bring national politics into local, into the local arenas. But unfortunately, what happens in Raleigh and Washington DC directly affects how Macon County operates. One way that national politics affected Macon County recently was the ARCA funds. This board did not have a chance to discuss our options for use of these funds, which could have potentially gone towards helping our children, schools, red parks, emergency service, maintenance facility, and anything else to help our entire county as a whole. It was suggested to the county manager to wait until this board could further discuss, but he insisted on bringing this project to the forefront to give yet another bonus to the employees, from which he himself would also greatly benefit. Even though I value this county's employees, it is my job to serve the taxpayers of this county, not the government. In serving the taxpayers, it is this board's duty to prevent overstaffing or inefficient spending, which undeniably extract precious dollars from taxpayers. This commissioners board is tasked with one, being effective and efficient with county government, questioning the gross amount in the undenoted fund balance, keeping taxes low, taking care of taxpayers' assets, among other things. If we add in the fire tax and the landfill fees, Macon County does not have the lowest tax rate in the state. Finally, in relation to my statement on November fourteenth, that the county is falling apart, I spent five hours December the fourth with the maintenance director, looking at some of the county properties that need some serious, serious attention. Properties we could have spent ARCA funds repairing, assets that we are responsible for upkeeping before we entertain taxing the citizens of this county for things we cannot afford. You might love me, you might hate me, but I will always represent the taxpayers first and foremost, which is the task that this board all shares in common. If representing the taxpayers and being good stewards of the county's assets by challenging the growth of government is not our common goal, then there will obviously be division on this board. I encourage anyone to reach out to me to discuss any of these topics, because it is my desire to help Macon County succeed. And um, Mr. Sheriff, um, I'd just like to uh, address something here. The media said that I've asked for the manager's resignation based on ARCA funds. That is absolutely wrong. When I was in a meeting with him, and he said we were fifty percent overstaffed, and he said, "I never said that." So, I didn't say that.
Okay.
So, we're, okay. Uh, this is, uh, Mr. Sheriff shared his thoughts with you, and uh, that'll be the last time. I mean, he, he said what you're asking to, uh, make his response. He's made a response. We won't be revising uh, those types of things. And thank you, Mr. Sheriff, for your comment. Uh, this time we'll uh, entertain a log to the uh, for the gentleman.
Should I ask for one more call? One more than time.
In your next place.
Welcome. Sarah Johnson. I live in Otto, North Carolina. Yeah, Sarah Johnson, sorry. Um, if we could please allocate some funds for the art program and some teachers, it would do a lot to keep your mental health issues with your kids right now. You want to help kids, help their mental health. Give them a creative outlet. Be it, be it uh, music, or sculpture, or paintings, or photography. You've got it all around you. It's very important. And it's very important that they have a well-rounded development early. Catch them before they get to Franklin High. Give them a chance to learn a little bit sooner. That way, they're more prepared when they hit college. I can speak from experience. I've been K through twelve through this county. They need art. Thank you.
Sheriff, the public comment period. And log you for that.
Don't move, Chairman.
Second.
Second.
You have the discussion. No, thank you all very much. We'll be moving on with the agenda. We'll probably hold out about thirty seconds or so, so if y'all, some of you need to leave, or wanting to leave. And you're welcome to stay for the rest of the agenda. Addition to the agenda.
The Chairman would kind of like to add.
Former board member.
What we're going to, new business, uh, fourteen E. D. Discussion of county property that need immediate attention.
Fourteen B.
Fourteen.
Sheriff, that topic.
It is, uh, discussion of the library. Over there.
Uh. You got a, uh, addition to, uh, agenda, and a, a, to the, uh, to the agenda.
Yeah.
So, um, I have an addition to the agenda as well, which will be fourteen E on the new business. It'll be declaration of sheriff's department's service weapon to be declared as surplus property.
And, I've been putting your surplus, how many, or what am I saying?
It's a service weapon to be declared as surplus property.
Shields, if you could, uh, please remove, uh, number fourteen A from the agenda. And also, I, I think that, um, our auditor is with us here tonight, and they had traveled from Charlotte. If we could put them up in the, the front of the reporting presentations, I think this page will get back to Charlotte tonight. So that will just be a simple, uh, with our fiscal year audit there at A on reports and presentations, and move the opioid funding meeting to E.
Is, uh.
Just a switch.
Anything else, uh, before we get out of town today, about Department of Education resolution? Would you want to play it?
Be a closed session. But you don't have the person.
Okay.
And I'll defer to the attorney to cite that statute.
Since we heard the presentation, yes, well, I would still want to, uh, have a conversation about, uh, thirteen twelve, today, you know, it's Department of Education resolution, you can.
You want to put that at twelve D?
We have it at that.
Okay. Well, it's not on here now, but we can add it if you.
I think I saw it somewhere else.
Fourteen C.
Fourteen C is our resolution that we presented, that was tabled from the last month. School board did, uh, send the county a separate resolution that opposes that. So if you want to make that, um, if you would like them, they are here tonight. I'm seeing, uh, the, the chairman and as well from here, she did read the resolution into the record. If you would like to give them, uh, a lot further opportunity to comment on, certainly add it.
Twelve D, when you come to it.
Okay, so we'll add twelve D. And that is, uh, opposing opposing parts of the children's school. Yes.
Free blow, we'll give you another. Can you start to comment on this?
That'll be fine, Mr. Chairman.
Through with those adjustments, a little about things.
If anybody else has any.
Thank you for moving adjustments. If we can, you know, number sixteen, yeah, fourteen, sixteen, last bit, okay there. Since I'm going to need some for the library, it's going to go back to the next one.
Uh, I mean, uh.
Thank you.
For the library.
If you need a consensus of the board to, to title up your next, what's the liaison I could be at, at that time?
I mean, it's been laying quite a long. Can we boot that, so he can impress that? We have an obligation, I, we have an obligation. We just, we lay, I.
So do we just choose from that limitation? Can we go back and choose also from the other limitations from March or the previous?
All I saw was one of them here, Miss Boxman.
And that was, that was the new, that was.
That's the new. Oh, it's like a pool of candidates from the original, I think, that I didn't watch you not go from the, uh, that is a genius as well.
I mean, you can choose any candidate, but you all, as board, you're in charge of selecting the board members. I think that's your call.
I, I think, and, and, and in that vein, I think if that's considered the, that would make sense to take this and, and, yeah, put all those allegations back into consideration.
It's a.
Yeah. Yes, sir. So I, I think, Mr. Shields, I think you had a consensus that this could be titled. Um, I think that's fine. You can act on consensus and we'll just, when we get there, we'll just get through it.
I believe there's a number of sections. Sometimes we're, we're keeping a moment of things. We're not addressing the things. We're too delayed. So, can we say we will do this next, maybe in, uh, January?
It's not my call.
Hey, guys, about again, with other thing I'm like to see.
I think this is the first time on for this, if I'm not mistaken, we've had prior, but I think this is the first time on.
The reason for this is because we have one limitation, so I don't, I don't believe that the entire board is aware of the other applicants as well. So to do just a vote tonight, just based on that one application, when there are other candidates that are actually also in the same pool that are voting to make a war, I think we can get all of these votes together, so we have a better trace.
Do you have a regard for the diet reforms and the, and where it's all in?
Sure.
I do that.
Sure. I agree with that.
We had.
Bring, bring, bring the judge here to the law, sir. Okay. So what do we just do?
We table, no, no, this, sixteen, yeah.
Now, then, Mr. Chairman, can you bring us, any regulation for a vote on, or is it going to be like two or three people that we have to vote on? Can you just, you're the best on, can you bring us a person's name?
Would you just take the petition, would you, that's to have, uh, do with the vote, those candidates?
I mean, yeah, yeah.
Uh, there, there was a good number of applicants that first seat. We'll have to go back and look.
It was only March meetings.
So there was a ballot.
All those named.
All the ballots.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Marsen is here. She is our local librarian. And maybe she can shed some light on this. Would you like to approach the, uh, over in this first?
Good evening. I just wanted to give a little more context to that nomination. For the BiOus of the Mickey County Public Library. Two positions of trustees have to come from the board of the Hudson Library. The Hudson Library in Highlands has its own board because they own their own building. So two, and that's. Stated in the BiOus. So we have two, two positions from the board. One of them is empty, vacant. The person who has a five or open is currently the chair of that board.
Which BiOus is there?
The Mickey County Public Library. I did submit in the packet with her application, I believe, spotless.
So does that mean we can make a selection from the candidates from March?
For that particular position, it has to come from the library. However, we do have another looking that is coming out of that library. And that would be open to any selection.
So that person. Is. Named you out of the Hudson Library, you know.
They have their own board. And they, for the BiOus, just the way that they're written, two positions on the trustees of Mickey Library, three from that board.
And that was directly when I should do the, this board.
So they, that is where they're notified, there is a opening. They choose a one themselves, their nominee, and that is the application that I have to assist.
So that's the only thing that we can basically choose from, is how to choose.
That was their nomination under, that was the person that they chose to nominate.
So that's the only thing that we can choose, basically choose.
If you would like me to request that they nominate not that additional person, I'm happy to do that.
Yes.
Okay.
Of the current. Thank you, Mr. Library Board. Bye long. Thank me and two from the Hudson Library, just to be amended. That either would lead the library. Immediately. I want it to have a nine day library. That would be the fair. What we do next on the back, which one do we do? Should we get two more tables? We should do that thing. Maybe a table will have. And if there's discussion on it, can we further discuss for clarification? Round area.
Tableting it would be fine. I mean, I think tabling was the final decision. Megan, you can decide next.
Yeah. Yes.
Motion that night is the.
It's like a consensus.
Are we going to say that? Mr. Chairman, I'd like to motion. Approve the agenda. Okay, there, one base of five. Thank you, Chairman. I said, don't ever lose your agenda. I've done it a couple of times, you're like cattle. Second, that motion. Second. Second, any more discussion? Looking at, thanks, thanks, January. Want to do with the house.
We just can't sense a citizen.
I'll vote for. Peril of the agenda. Thank you, President. Approve the agenda and the.
Just clarify, we've got a motion on the board second.
All right, I can show you. Peril of the agenda.
All right, so just to clarify, we're ready to move. Grand Bond's discussion about the library has been tabled by consensus. So Mr. Pigden made a motion. To approve the agenda with all the corrections we just made. I second the motion. Now we're in the phase of discussion and calling the question.
More discussion. Call for the question. Go. Thank you, getting onwards for the portion of presentation.
Good to have you, Mr. Willis.
Good evening. My name is Jill Dang. I'm from Martin Starnes and Associates. And I'm here to present the 2023 audited financial statements. The audit report has been submitted to the local government commission and we are waiting for approval from them. I want to begin with some audit highlights. We issued an unmodified opinion, which means that the financial statements are fairly presented, all material spikes in conformity with GAAP. This year, as part of the single audit recording, we tested four major programs, which was the Medicaid. The formula grants for rural areas, the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, and the state age airport program. And this year, GAZI ninety six was implemented. It's a new standard in fiscal year twenty three for the subscriptions based information technology arrangements. And performance indicators, which we will discuss at the end of the slide shows about performance indicators and self-reporting to the local government commission. This slide shows the total fund balance in the general fund over the past three years. Total fund balance increased seven point six million, or about seventy point four percent from twenty two to twenty three. Increase in the fund balance over prior year. With that seventy point four percent, total revenues exceeded expenditures by eight point one million. But after other financing sources and uses, like your leases and your subscription liabilities issued of six hundred forty eight thousand, there are also transfers in two million. Transfers out of three million, the select the general fund with an increase of five ounces, seven point six eighty dollars. This slide shows the available fund balance in the general fund. Available fund balance is calculation utilized as the basis for comparing you to other units and calculating your fund balance percentage. In two thousand twenty three, the available fund balance was at forty six point, forty five point six million, which is an increase from prior year of about seven point two million. This slide shows the available fund balance plus the debt service fund balance as a percentage of net expenditures. In two thousand twenty three, it was at eighty three point two five percent. The counties, LGC has a minimum fund balance percentage of twenty percent with units with general fund expenditures below a hundred billion dollars. Average of similar units are at thirty nine percent in the county in the book, the minimum. This slide shows the general fund revenues and expenditures comparing two thousand twenty two to two thousand twenty three. Note that these numbers do not include the other financing sources and uses such as transfer, leases. And subscription liabilities issued. Revenues increased by about eight point two four percent, which is about five million dollars in prior year. Increases were noted in the local option sales tax, interest earnings, and restricted intergovernmental revenues. Expenditures increased by about eleven point three percent, about five point nine million dollars. And we saw increases in various departments like the general government, both safety, transportation, and human services. This slide shows the revenue sources in the general fund. The top three revenue sources were adult alarm taxes at fifty two percent, restricted intergovernmental at fourteen percent. And local option sales tax at twenty two percent. And then you have your other revenues that makes up twelve percent that's listed on the side there. And we're going to look at the top three revenues in the next few slides. Adult alarm taxes increased by about five hundred and eight thousand dollars, a one point five percent, and that was very comparable to prior year. Restricted intergovernmental revenues increased five hundred forty one thousand, or about six point two percent, and that was noted. With increases in the federal state grants and local health and social services revenues. Local option sales tax increased by about one point seven million dollars, or thirty point four percent. Increase, increases were in taxable sales and purchases within the county. This slide shows the expenditures in the general fund. The top three expenditures were public safety at thirty one percent. Human services at twenty two percent, education at twenty percent. The top three makes up seventy two point six four percent of total expenditure. And we'll also look at the top three in the next few slides. Public safety expenditures increased by about one million dollars, or six point three percent due to increases in salaries and benefits. Human service. Expenditures increased by about eight hundred forty eight thousand, or seven point three percent due to increases in health programs across the board. Education expenditures increased by one point three million, or about twelve point two percent, and that was noted due to public schools capital outlay expenditures. This slide shows an overview of the solid waste fund. Cash increased by about seven hundred ninety two thousand, or at five point seven percent from prior year. Gap net income, actually gap net loss. We're looking at the loss here. The loss increased mainly due to increases in the landfill closure. And post closure care, and that's related to full accrual adjustment of the liability. Cash basis net income does not include items such as depreciation, changes in post closure costs, other post employment benefits, but they do include your capital outlay expenditure and your debt service. Payments, and it is lower, the current year is lower than the prior year due to increases in operating expenditures in the current year. Cash flow from operations decreased due to increases paid, cash paid for goods and services and to employees for services. And the cash net position. Decrease, and that's a direct effect from the gap net. Net loss, I'm sorry, gap net loss. Now we're going to look at some performance indicators. Along with the submission of the audit report to the local government commission, we are also required to complete a data input sheet with various. With various financial information. Lori reviews and certifies template to be submitted. This template analyzes the data and provides results as performance indicators to the LGC. Performance indicators ranges from deficit fund balance, statutory violation, or significant fines. The board is required to do self-reporting. They are no longer sending out unit letters. Within sixty days of this presentation, the board must issue a written response to the above item with explanations and a corrective action plans. The correspondence must be signed by board members, county managers, and finance directors. There are, the findings that we have this year are related to the compliance testing, which is the major programs that we've tested. And there were three compliance findings in the two thousand twenty three audit report. The first one is related to the DSS cross cutting enterprise program integrity. The second finding is related to the Medicaid program eligibility requirements. The third finding is related to the rural areas and tribal transit program, and that's in the program income requirements. And there are details for the findings in the compliance section of the audit report. Now we're going to look at some positive performance indicators that are noted on the data input sheet. The audit report was timely submitted to the LGC. As discussed earlier, the county's general fund fund balance available. Including the debt service fund balance at, for two thousand twenty three was at eighty three point two percent, and it was above the LGC's minimum. And the county also has a stable property tax help collection percentage at ninety eight point eight one percent. Want to thank you for allowing us to serve as your auditors. And we look forward to working with you guys in years to come, and thank you for this time.
Hey, I've got one quick question. I enjoy your hearing. I could ask a bunch of them, but. On a budget of this scale, twenty percent in education, thirty one percent public safety, are those numbers proportional to what you see? You know, built out originally, nationally?
I don't have information like that with me. I can look on the LGC's website, because they do have percentages out there that's comparable to units. I can see what they have out there. And I can send you the link, or I can send it to Laura and she can forward it to you. And they probably won't have twenty twenty three yet because they're just wrapping up the twenty twenty three stuff. It's going to be late in March, twenty twenty two stuff.
Thank you.
See Russ.
Yes, thank you for sure. While Russ is coming up with us, I would just like to announce that. this December twelfth, twenty twenty-three, at this time, we'll declare this our annual opioid funding meeting. We've talked a lot about the opioid funds and the funding that we have received. We haven't, however, got into how we're going to be using those funds. And as you can see here, not many counties across the state have. And Southwestern Commission has taken, as it always does, a lead in this region with respect to helping our seven western counties decide how to regionally use these funds as we begin on this road. Per section E four of the MOA between the state of North Carolina, Macon County, we are to have this annual meeting related to the settlement of opioid litigation and how we're going to use those proceeds. Apart in addition to Russ, the town of Highlands, as well as the town of Franklin, were invited to this meeting. Do we have any representatives from either of those bodies here tonight? We have invited them for their input on the opioid planning process, so they are not here tonight. Lori had some information that you that she will pass out to you right now on opioid funding that has been received to date by Macon County. We have not yet spent those funds. We and Lori, if you'd like to go over, I just go over with the board the funding we've received today.
Sure. What what's passing around to you? Lays out, we're expecting a little over five point four million over an eighteen-year period. Of course, for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, we did receive the three hundred eighty-nine thousand seven hundred nineteen dollars listed there in the chart. And that actually includes the, there was some right at the end of fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two that came in, so it is included in that number. Also, this current fiscal year, we're expected to get seven hundred sixty-six thousand seven dollars. We have received two hundred twenty-four thousand six hundred thirty-one dollars and ninety-eight cents. So we're still anticipating additional five hundred forty-one thousand three seventy-five oh three before the end of fiscal year. And I looked on the site today, the last this was last updated November second. And the site, uh, sorry, I didn't bring that website link, but I can email it to all of y'all if you're interested. But this changes continually, but that was again last updated November second. But the site mentioned that, you know, the payments that's been received, they kind of knew when they were coming, but the remaining five hundred forty-one thousand, there was no guidance on, we should expect those, but again, hopefully they should come before June thirty. And then on the the one page that you got headed out there, you can see from fiscal twenty-five through fiscal thirty-nine, you know, we're receiving various payments. Um, as of November thirtieth, we have received six hundred fourteen thousand three hundred fifty dollars and ninety-nine cent year to date. For me, total to date, we've also earned twenty-three thousand seven hundred thirty-three dollars and forty-six cents interest on that. So sitting in the bank right now for opioid settlement, we have six hundred thirty-eight thousand eighty-four dollars and forty-five cents.
Thank you, Lori, and uh, this, what happens with that money? That money goes into a special revenue fund that we have established. This funding cannot be spent until the county passes a resolution indicating how they want to spend the funds. That is also spelled out in the memorandum agreement that we signed with the state of North Carolina, section E six. As I mentioned earlier, we're we're still waiting, we're still early in the game. We'll be receiving this funding over the course of eighteen years. Not many counties across the state have chosen how they wish to spend this money. At this time, there's forty-seven counties that have passed single or multiple resolutions indicating how they wish to spend the funds. So every project, every time you spend a chunk of these funds, you have to, you have to adopt a resolution that spells that out and and that that we have available. So we have not done that at this time. As you can see, again, not many have forty-six counties have chosen option A that of these forty-seven that have passed these resolutions and four have chosen option B. Again, a county can choose multiple, um, has to do multiple resolutions anytime a, uh, a new project is being used from these funds. So that's why that number does a total. Option A, now there's two major differences between opt, or there's one major difference between option A and option B. Option A, no strategic planning is required before these funds can be expended. It's simply, we just have to have this annual meeting, and we have to pass a resolution prior to spending these funds that I've outlined. These can be used for reentry programs, addiction for treatment, incarcerated persons, criminal justice conversion program, recovery support, early intervention, and the list goes on. Option B, a little bit more cumbersome and a little bit more detailed. There's a little bit more strategic planning involved, some steps you gotta take, some boxes you gotta check that you cannot have to do with the option A method. And these include opioid activities that are associated with treatment, prevention, and other activities as well. So before we can spend these funds that that we receive and they sit in a special revenue fund, they they continue to accrue interest. So over the next eighteen years, we would have to pass a resolution indicating what option that we chose. We would have specified what program and how we would spend those funds. So right now, again, we're in the planning phase. Southwestern Commission is taking the lead on that. And the lead to have with us here tonight, brother Russ Harris from Southwestern Commission. And he's going to tell you a little bit about their planning efforts and and how that fits in with your creation. So thank you, Russ.
Thanks, Mr. Rowland, Commissioner, good to be here tonight. So across the seven counties which serve, local governments have received about twenty million dollars or twenty-nine million dollars over that eighteen-year period. And even though County Manager Rowland said, if you choose option A, you don't have to do strategic planning. When this funding started coming, a lot of local governments began getting a lot of requests for people that had ideas for how they could spend that money. And so most of the counties here in the West kind of took a pause at that point. And even if they weren't required to do a strategic plan, wanted to do one because it would give them a framework to make the best decisions that would have the best impact in their communities. Uh, sixteen months ago, we started to have a couple of counties reach out and say, well, why don't we just do a regional planning effort as a group? And then shortly after that, Swing County reached out, and they had received some funding from Dogwood Health Trust to do planning. And they asked if they could transfer those funds to us, and we would do a regional plan instead of them doing the local plan themselves. And a couple of reasons for doing a regional plan. Number one, if the whole region, if all the counties were going to be planning, it didn't make sense for everybody to work in parallel with one another, using up staff time. So it was felt that it could be more efficient if we didn't one plan as a region. It also gives us an opportunity to look for, you know, opportunities for alignment. There may be issues that we can all pitch in together as a region, whether it's a treatment facility or it just may be things like if you've got a jail program and you've got people that are getting treated in jail, you need some kind of case management when they come out to help follow up with them. You may not need your own position. There may be an opportunity to share positions with other counties that are doing similar things. Uh, and then the other opportunity or the other reason to do a regional project is just sharing best practices. And so we had the first meeting about fourteen months ago, and brought county staff together. And even sitting in that room, there was interest in the Macon County jail program and the things you all were doing there from some of the other counties who want to learn more about that. So working regionally gives us the chance to learn from one another. So we brought together county staff just to confirm that everybody wanted to move forward with this project. And then we released a request for proposals last winter. And we ended up choosing a company called Omni Institute to lead this effort. And we kicked off that effort last June. So we brought together county staff again, just to say, look, here's the plan. Is this your needs? Is this what, you know, you want to do? And what does success look like for you all into this process? After that, they moved into data collection. You all have a dashboard in front of you that I handed out downstairs. And that was from Macon County, and it kind of shows the current situation in Macon County. The first page shows, um, you know, ER visits, opioid deaths, some of that stuff. The backside kind of shows demographics that are related to risk factors. And one in particular that's of interest there, there's a box on the right-hand side halfway down that shows how an aging population kind of contributes to this issue or how that's affected by this issue, which is perfect to us because we are the fastest aging region in the state of North Carolina. So that's extremely relevant. Once they did those dashboards, they moved into stakeholder input, which we're still in the middle of that process right now. They've done thirty-three focus group interviews. They've done thirteen one-on-one interviews, and right now we've got surveys out. You all should have received an email from me this morning with a link to that survey. If you did not, please reach out to me or anybody else in the public that would like to take that survey and give input. We'd love to hear from you. My email is russ@regiona.org, and you can just email me and I will shoot you that link. If you want to share that with folks you know in the community who should give input, please do that. Today, we've got about seventy responses to that survey, and it will close at seven point seven. We expect to have a draft of this plan in February, and I think one thing that's important to know with this is the plan starts with the county level and goes up. So if a county doesn't have a plan, they're going to take the input that guy like with Macon County, create a Macon County level plan for you all to see, um, and then take that and kind of feed it up to the regional level. So it's not coming from the regional level down to the candidate, but the other way around. And all implementation decisions have absolutely been made at local level. Once they complete that draft, then they will start working on implementation plan, which just means they're looking at other funding opportunities out there. So if you decide on a plan to tag what you want to do, they will be able to show other funding sources. So you're not spending all of your settlement funds on that, but there may be other opportunities to leverage those funds to have more impact in your community. And then also we'll have an evaluation piece for that as well. But then after over eighteen years, we expect the situation to change over time. So we want to have a framework to come back in five years or eight years or whatever it is. Look at this, find out what's working, what's not, and make adjustments if we need to. And then we expect the final product to be completed and delivered next year. And with that, I'll take any questions you have, and I'll give the answers and get back to you.
Russ, thank you, and and just to highlight, Southwestern Commission, they're a tremendous resource. Again, they've taken the lead on this here tonight. We also have North Carolina Association of County Commissioners who have numerous sources of information for us. They have sample resolutions when we decide to choose an option on which direction we're going. We have those sample resolution. They have interns that have held counties in choosing which direction to go and kind of, you know, mediator, putting this process together. They have interns who are available to assist with those. I've contacted the NCACC about that as we move forward. But for right now, I think, you know, the Southwestern Commission, and as Russ was saying, this process that that they're undergoing is about to conclude, and it will conclude in February. And again, this is going to give us a chance, as Russ said, to see, uh, to see how we're aligned region and to to hear from many stakeholders that were from Macon County that have been involved in this process. And to to be able to more accurately pinpoint the needs that we're having and like Russ said, make sure we're not duplicating efforts. So I think they're valued in 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 letting this money in us just waiting on this process to conclude with the Southwestern Commission. And I think no matter when we start discussing this, and we'll get this information back, and we'll have many more tools to make these decisions with. But I think it, one thing that I would say in meetings that we've had is that as far as Macon County goes, we have, we have some of the best local programs that deal with opioid abuse, substance abuse, reentry programs in the detention center, as Russ mentioned. We set the bar across this region in terms of programs like that. There are many great, great local programs that are boots on the ground, that have been actively involved in combating this opioid crisis in Macon County for years. And if there, if there's one thing that is important, as we discuss this moving forward, these local providers need to have a seat at the table. We have such a strong infrastructure in place and an opportunity to use these funds to bolster that infrastructure. People are in the business, they're doing it, they're good at it, and and it's working and it's effective. So I think we need to really look at those local programs and and make sure they have a seat at the table.
Derek, with all due respect, what are, what is the percentage that the commissions are going to receive out of our opioid monies?
Uh, they're not receiving anything.
Not yet.
Yeah.
Not at all.
Right.
But it's what, over twenty percent?
No, no, they, we will not. Our monies, we can spend it however we want to.
No, never doubt.
This was funded through another grant that that they're they're doing all this work for us. And and they're going to have, they're going to give us this information and the results of this region-wide study that they're conducting. And then we have all that money that we can spend to do however we see fit.
I have some handouts. Thank you. Thank you. I'm Bill Kirkman. I live in Scaly Mountain and have been part of the community for a long time. Um, I am president of the Historical Society. We own the community building and maintain it and and all the property and and around. Darren Gillett's here with me, and he is president of the Community Association of Scaly Mountain. So, um, we're here to tell you a little bit about the building itself. It was built in eighteen ninety-nine, was a schoolhouse from nineteen hundred to the nineteen fifty-seven. Became a number of things. And then two thousand eight, uh, we redid it, uh, updated it, restored it, and preserved it. We own it and maintain it, and we are all volunteers, all of us that work on it or are involved in it are volunteers. Through your support with getting broadband internet into Scaly Mountain, one of the locations it came to was this building. And so we have fiber, high-speed fiber internet there with Wi-Fi capabilities. Um, I'm also part of the Little T broadband organization. And, um, so Little T funded putting that Wi-Fi out there and making sure that it's always available. It is really the only source of internet for a lot of our residents, for some students. And we fund that service, make sure that it is free, available to all, any resident that wants to. And so we maintain that and and pay for that. Uh, it is because we don't have really good cell service in the area. It is also where people go to make phone calls and and use that for for that purpose as well. Uh, we have a playground, um, that we've installed, and it really is the only recreation facility within ten miles. It has a lighted basketball court. We put a fence around the playground area, so, you know, you can put your kids in there and let them run around and not worry about that. There's a creek side picnic area. We put tables in there, and there's a grill. We, the 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 river itself or the creek itself has a nice little waiting area for kids and families to play in, and it's it's busy often. We we do have installed a portage on at all times, so it's outside, so they have access to that. When the building's unlocked, they can go inside as well. It is the Community Association Building. We have a lot of functions there throughout the year. It is home to the Scaly Mountain Women's Club, and they do pancake breakfasts there. Come join us in the summer. It's it's a great, great time together. But they raise funds to give scholarships to local students, so it's also a nonprofit. It is really a a great facility. It is used for weddings, um, family reunions, lots of other events. There's a full kitchen in there, a bathroom, um, and it is the point where the school buses pick up as well. It is one of the last remaining restored historic buildings in Macon County. And it was a school, so we believe strongly in in maintaining that commitment to education. So what we're asking for is you all generously provide us some money every year to to help maintain, really is to just help us keep the lawn updated and things like that. It's gotten to a point where the building itself needs a lot of work. We raised a number of about twenty-five thousand dollars this year to fix the building itself. It was rotten wood, and there was a lot of, a lot of things that needed to be done, and so we've done that. But there's still a number of other things that need to be done. And so we're asking for some some real important maintenance, structural things. We found mold, as I expect you probably find in every building you go in around here, but it but it needs to be addressed. Um, there's no HVAC system, so it's really difficult to use the system, to use the facility in the winter. And it was built with local materials a hundred and twenty-five years ago. And so we're asking for an immediate twenty thousand dollars to help us just maintain some of these things and really get the building up so we can use it even more and use it in the winter. And then in two thousand eight, um, the county granted us five thousand dollars a year when we redid the building and and restored it. Um, and that's really the reason we're able to even keep it open. It's a big part of what, and and our costs keep increasing, and so we're asking that you increase that to ten thousand dollars a year. And I just want to thank you all.
How's that talk spot work? I mean, when the building's locked in there?
We have, um, it's available. We have some parking spaces and people, you'll see people. We have some parking spaces and people, you'll see people sitting in their cars.
They're right behind or up front?
Yes, mostly out front. There is some ability to get behind it as well. So if, if you need access, handicap access, then you come behind the building and we have a place to park and you can get in that way. And there's porches and we have tables outside. So there's a lot of space outside for them to use it. And, and if somebody will reserve it. We have a lot of people who work from home or have a big important meeting. And this is a very reliable internet service, so we will open it up for them and provide it for that. So we can do that way.
Not a password protected.
Oh yeah, it's, it's wide open. There's no password for the internet, so anybody can.
Anyone who parks in the parking lot would have access to it.
But it's needed in that.
But if there is, if there's someone who is maybe working remotely and they do need a password protected portion of the wifi, we provide that as well. So if, if security concerns, you know, are with a company and they're trying to, then we can allow them access with a password protected VPN service as well, so.
Yeah, it's a great service. We're continuing, I'm sorry, that would be great. Yes, some, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I met with this group a few months back. Was quite impressed with all the activities that they have in this historical building and with the kids going there, doing homework and stuff like that with no revivable heat source, all the activities that they have in this. It is a very well-used community center. And, and I, I believe Scaly Mountain don't really ask for a whole lot of stuff. And as you see, most of that work on the picture of this, this building, the work that they have done as volunteer. If you haven't seen it, you should go, you should go check it out because it's quite impressive. And understanding their needs as far as heat and help with that, I'd like to make a motion tonight that we grant them the twenty thousand dollars to help with this HVAC system and, and the needs of this building for their community.
Well, no, I'm just, I'm curious. So you mentioned HVAC, maybe I missed that presentation. So you have like an itemized list of the repairs that are needed for the board. And in the past, previous boards have given money to other organizations to maybe renovate and, you know, get them up to par, but we've done it on a reimbursement basis instead of just saying, here's twenty thousand dollars. You know, it's more that you get the repairs done, you have receipts, invoices, you turn them in to me and finding us to cut you a check. Is that palatable? And like I said back to my first part, you know, you have kind of an itemized list before we would get started and these are the repairs we'd like to do.
There's a number, and I'm, yes, there's a number of repairs that we need and they do exceed this amount. I'm trying to find some other funds in the community and we've have, we have a great, great community and they've been very generous, generous so far. There's an HVAC system, there just isn't one really. So that's gonna be probably about thirteen, fourteen thousand dollars, I believe, to get it installed. We have had a home inspection person come out and that's about the mold. We don't have access to underneath, so we're not a hundred percent sure what all that's going to take to address that, how much money or whatever. But it needs, needs some underlayment and some other things like that. The water heater leaks, we have to turn it off when we don't use it. So it really needs to be replaced and.
We want to put in on demand so that it's not constantly heating water that's no one is using, so.
The, the front of the building has a pretty steep grade and people often are walking up the drive, there's a little driveway path for the back of the building. That's where a lot of people end up walking and we've had some people fall and we need to put some stairs there, put some railings, make sure it's really safe. Our parking is, needs some real improvements. There's just a number of things like that. We want to make sure that the inside, that it is really better office space and maybe perhaps that multiple people can be there and there at once. And so there's improvements that way. The fence around the playground needs some updates, lots, lots of things. Yes, we have a list.
Let me ask you a couple of quick questions. Been on Scaly Mountain my whole life, found a place that this building is, sat on the boat and all, but soon you turn around.
Yes. It was a church at one point, yeah, Methodist church for a number of years.
I guess that's something I want to make is like, I really see it being like open to me and my family pulling in there and using the crew and the backup work and the internet. I'd love to have a cell phone service right there. The only place I need a cell phone service right now is Hail Ridge, Department. So I just feel like this thing kind of fits in our community funding pool allocation if we run a budget. If we have these items set aside in my own thinking anyway, so I just feel like I want to support this thing. I just feel like I want to take a more principled route, kind of stick it in line with our community funding pool. I think that's where this fund, this funding should come from. I think it's all worthy. But I would also encourage you, this is going to be a contribution from the tax department, maybe to open it up for people in the community to understand.
That's great advice. I really appreciate that. It's one of the most important things to me is to make sure everybody in the community knows about it. And we, we try hard. I think some of our challenges and some where we want to spend a little bit of money is the landscaping when in two thousand eight that was planted, there were some nice trees spread about. They've all grown up so much you don't see it from the dillard grove. And it's right there and you just don't notice it as much. So we need to trim those up a little bit and make it more available. Thank you, I appreciate it. Yeah, sure. No, I do. And it is available, it is available to everybody. It is used a good amount. And we had a work day with a bunch of volunteers about a month ago and we did a lot of work there. Thank you. What I was asking for on here, one is that we need, we just need to address the building itself and some of these mortgage things. And that's the twenty thousand dollars that we're asking for. And then, yes, I'm very appreciative of the five thousand dollars. It is a big part of what allows us to do some of the things we do. Our, it's been that way since two thousand eight and we'd like to increase that to ten thousand dollars on a on my basis.
No, I mean, if you approve it tonight, I would recommend making it from the ten to the twenty thousand. I think we have a motion to look forward and the other thing to say. So I did a discussion that yes, if you approved it tonight, it would come out of the community contingent's votes. And like I said, my preference is that they get the work done, turn in receipts, reimburse them. That's what we've done on other buildings.
To exceed just forty thousand.
That's what we've done with other agencies that are giving money to kind of get them up to form standards so that community can use them.
And we're assisting now in a community limited library construction project over there. Raw land is going to be a lot, lot of people. So this is, this is directly benefiting the residents of Scaly Mountain.
It is.
Yeah, and there's more can be to do on that handicap route, I think.
Yes. Right.
One car a town, so. Now, if you see twenty thousand, I guess, is that, is that satisfactory to everybody?
Great, yes.
Just like she said, then y'all get together on the paperwork.
You guys have my email.
Yes, yes, we do.
Yes, that is the motion.
Go. Four more comment. I hope you guys can come down here and show us how to save a hundred and twenty-five-year-old builder.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All the way.
He's, he's approaching.
And that's one group that wanted to go.
Yes, sir.
I think the resolution, Hillary did a wonderful job addressing it in terms of the resolution. So we do appreciate this opportunity to delve into it a little bit deeper. As far as it goes, we believe I've never worked on a reservation for fifteen years. I mean, you know, I think that's what I'm saying. I'm very proud of our board. I think we always follow the creed that we have in our, in our meeting, which says, in the vet's interest, students. And that is what drives us, that's our goal, that's what we want to get to. And also thank y'all for me enough. I think it's time that you also listen to two other members of our board. First, I want to introduce, I need to introduce, everybody knows Deidre Breeden. Deidre's our new member. She's just now finishing her first year. And in this to say, she's been a great asset to our board. So without further ado, Deidre, if you would.
Hi, two meetings in a row, what an honor. So I make a career out of listening to people and not just listening. I seek to understand where they're coming from. And that's a lot of different points of views. And I've had a lot of discussions lately from people that support both sides of this issue. And I do believe that there are good intentions behind both sides of this issue. Those who believe that the school board needs to be partisan, the ones that I've had discussions with at least are coming from a place of wanting transparency and wanting to encourage voters who don't necessarily take the time to educate themselves on particular individual stances, maybe where they're coming from. Because if their party affiliation is clear, then maybe that will tell them a little bit more about what the person stands for. But in contrast to that, and what I have really learned over the last year is it's super important for, which all of you know, and all voters, I hope, take this apart as well. It's really important to get to know your candidates at a personal level, what they stand for. Because as I've said a lot of times while I was running and campaigning for office, I'm not a politician. Don't call me that. You know, I may identify with the Republican Party, but I'm not a politician. Because who I identify as, number one, is a follower of Christ, a wife and a mom. And that's, I mean, that is what leads how I vote and the things that I stand for. And all of us on our board have similar things that motivate us. And it's not a D or an R or an I. Then there are people who, from the other side, who do not support this being a partisan race for that very issue. They want you to get to know the candidates. And then some might argue, in contrast to that, that the climate that we live in today is a very politically charged climate. And I think that's kind of an undeniable truth that we all have to accept. The grass is green, the sky is blue, and this is a politically charged world. So people want to know. Okay. But here's where my issue with this whole concept comes. When I first got notified last month that this was on your agenda, I took a pause and I said, okay, is Nana Haylo on the agenda? No. About the middle school track? No. Okay. Those are the issues that over the last year, I keep a running list of in my phone and a little red book that I carry around. The voters are reaching out to me with their concerns, all the things that I'm learning. It's all of these real-time issues that impact our students, our teachers, our staff, our families. Those are the things that I want to see discussed between our two boards. Now, over the last two months and four meetings between the two of our boards, we have spent time talking about this partisan issue. And some of the things that I have really been trying to get done over the last year have not gotten much time. And that's a little frustrating. So what I would ask for you, and I do, I appreciate you, I'm not complaining about taking a second meeting, second month to address this issue. But what I would like to say is I want you to, I appreciate it, but I want you to consider, and this is just a gentle reminder, you know, some of your constituents have expressed their opinion on this issue. But as, as a board, the five of us are also citizens of Macon County. And we have come together with a stance on this issue. And I just want to gently and respectfully ask that you acknowledge that with any action that you decide to take tonight.
And also Ms. Wilt, because I think she is, again, she hasn't been on the board as much as I have. But Hillary is, and as Deidre, I've learned over fifteen years, if you're smart, there's a couple of things you do. You have someone that speaks better than you do. If you're smarter than you are, you need to step aside and listen. So I think Hillary, representing this house, which Mr. Cheryl is a member of, I think she has also some very important things to say and bring to y'all to have to consider as you consider your future actions.
Thank you. I feel like the bullet points of the resolution that I read earlier were a great summation of some very thoughtful comments that were given at our school board meeting in November. I, I sat there and was the last to speak when we all started talking about this and was struck by how four totally different vantage points were summed up from Mr. Brede, Ms. Breeden, Ms. Lassiter, Ms. Evans, and then myself as the fifth. And it just showed me that there's a lot of different ways to look at this. But in my opinion, the bottom line, I do not think that a partisan school board serves our students, our parents, our faculty members, and quite frankly, our board. We operate very well together. We work very hard. We're in meetings with many of you often. We had one yesterday. Deidre and I are working very hard. We're writing the high school project and the mountains project and working very well with our commissioner liaisons. We have time that is spent doing better things than having these conversations. I ask that you please remove the resolution from your, your thoughts. I hope that it doesn't proceed further. I did have comments that I prepared that I did send to you all. You've all had a chance to read them. I'm not going to belabor those. I think that.
to have it presented to us via an agenda and to have to hear of it via a third party and, and then moved on at the last meeting, quite frankly, showed a little bit of disrespect for our board. And I appreciate some of those of you who have reached out to us to share your concern that, that it wasn't approached in the right way. We all need to work together. I think we all are working towards that, and many of us do work together very well. And I think we have a very positive path forward, and we have a county and a school system that we can all be very proud of. And our board needs to continue to function exactly as it does so that we can keep our projects moving forward and, and do the job we were elected to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
As I said, listen to those that can speak. I don't know if y'all, if you're permission, Mr. Cameron, I think everyone here knows where I stand. It's, it's very plain, and I've never dodged that, I just feel very strongly. If someone says it's not broke, why would you try to fix it? It's not broke. It's produced boards that are cohesive, it's produced boards that have one common goal, and that is to take care of the children of our county in the best way that we can and provide an education which is going to give them a leg up in their future. And that's all we're about, and that's all we want. So I haven't said that, again, Mr. Cameron, if you, anyone has any questions that we might answer, I would yield to your things, Mr. Anken, please.
So, it's not a question, but I just wanted to share a couple of things real quickly with you guys. First, you know, the spirit of unity and just understanding, I'm a big advocate for, again, it's hard about things. And I made the comments at the last meeting because of the way this was presented. I felt like there was some more professional courtesy needed in terms of us discussing this, especially because it involves your board. And I have to say, like, in the beginning of this, I was looking at this from a perspective, and my perspective was I was for the ownership of this. But honestly, after listening to you guys, and we've had some communications by email, I'm going to bring to the resolution, I gotta say, I'm definitely a supporter of what you all have stated tonight. So just wanted to, if you let you guys understand that, you know, my position has changed. And you guys have been able to hear your side of this, which means really good sense, you know, that you guys are supportive. So I just wanted to just see that you guys are not supporting what your position is in all this right now. Um, well, we have a little discussions, a little comments. Say it again.
The motion members.
Motion for this take, so. Um, well. I'm making a motion for one exactly what I just said. We support the revolution.
Motion to, uh, abolish that partisan, yes, revolution.
Yes.
That may on another way. Now, he just made a motion to, to, uh, basically
Exactly.
deny the resolution. This is terminate the, terminate the resolution that's pending.
Fourteen C.
That's what we're. Make motion, have a second on it. Second, second, discussion, more discussion.
Mr. Breelove, um.
This is.
This is a, uh, it sounds like that the school board of Macon County feel like this is a direct attack on you five members, but this is a much bigger picture in the state and national level. If it's not, then why do we have almost half of the school district in North Carolina going to partisan races? It, it seems like that there is a much bigger problem in education beyond Macon County. So, I mean, a lot of the local, uh, the surrounding counties adopted this, uh, partisan school board, um, as well. In my mind, as I stated before, I think that there should be a primary of the, uh, school board candidates. And, um, and it would clear up all this stuff that was brought up tonight as to, um, the Republicans. There were two Republicans marked on the Republican sample ballot, that is correct. That's who the Republican Party would have promoted. The Democrats had the Democrats marked on their sample ballot pending out. And politics is in every breath that we take. And it just seems like that the five school board members feel like it's a direct tackle of their personal being and also what you're doing for the kids. We understand what you're doing for the kids. Who sets the policies above and beyond Macon County's school system? That would be the question. That these policies are handed down to Macon County's school system. And you follow those, and you have very limited power when it comes to how the school system actually operates. Yeah, you, you, um, you guys select a schedule and everything else. Uh, I get it. But this is beyond, the politics is embedded into the public school system, and people want to know who they're voting for. Whether it's Democrat, whether it's Republican, that's why they, they went to the judges. The judges are partisan, and little by little, the school system's going to be the same way. So that's, um, that's my take. This is, um, and changing the subject a little bit, but this right here really goes in the same line as how libraries operate in this state and across this country. That's my take.
Anyone to go?
Mr. Sherrill, did you want me to reply to that, respond?
Please.
Uh, with all due respect, I disagree with your summation that you just had. This board of education, we have is not worried about national politics, we're not worried about state politics. We operate just like your board does. We have a lot of control on how the school system in Macon County conducts itself, how our curriculum is established, and how we try to do our best for our students to succeed. So we don't care bluntly about national politics. I don't care about state politics. We take what DPI, the Department of Public Instruction tells us, we work within that. But what we are saying is, and, uh, I'm not offended by, you know, I hate, I hate to, maybe we came across that we were offended or failed to tax, that's not the case. So if that came across, that was not what our intent was, I assure you. Our goal is to do what is, as I'm going to repeat this stuff, is what is in the best interest of Macon County students, period. That's all we're trying to do. And bluntly, this ward, I challenge anyone to find a better ward that works as, as well together as the current board of education, or the past boards of education I've been part of. I'm very proud of what we've done, very, very proud of it. So we just simply collectively as a group don't want to be involved in national politics, we don't want to be involved in state politics. We don't care about a letter. We want people to understand what we're about. And anyone who wants to join us, as long as they come with that attitude, we welcome with open arms. It's an election. My seat is up for election. There may be people that don't feel the same way I do. If they want to come forward and follow, that's how it works. I welcome them. They may have viewpoints that differ from mine, but it's election, it's our democracy at work, that's how we operate. But let's don't bring other things into our local scene. Let's just something over there. I don't think it serves any purpose. I think we're doing, I'll start using words I shouldn't use, but I think we're doing a heck of a job.
And I don't disagree.
Right. That's okay. Anyone else, we're, like I said.
All in favor? See, underneath there's a seed.
Yes, I, I think, yes, absolutely, the, um, the motion was to terminate the resolution supporting the identification of party affiliation of candidates for Macon County Board of Education as tabled at the November fourteen board commission.
All in favor of, right here? Good candidates, guys, and good challenges.
So you're now all opposed, so.
Hand me a paper, take it down. Same one over here, that again, all one. I didn't see all of it, I, I found it together, that's four of it. Thanks very much.
Gentlemen, thank you. Say one couple of things. We are.
Very anxious to work with y'all. I feel like this is a board, Mr. Sherrill, all of y'all, you are doing the things that you feel are necessary, and Mr. Sherrill especially will say, you're a manager of committees. I will admit to that. I respect that. You know, I think you do things based on what you truly feel your mission inside the county is, so, uh, I don't object. I'll never, you'll never hear me say anything adverse to you about that. But thank you all. That means a lot to us in terms of what just happened. Good night.
Oh, you only touch it right there?
That's right.
And due to health reasons, I need to come back if he's here, but he needed to. It's him.
Second, second. You got it. All in favor? Raise your hand.
Morning.
I'm the next person.
Please, I want this on the, you know, adopted date. We're renewing the new resolution, adopting code of ethics. I was like, can one form to the sweeping technical. I saw it was approved. This was adopted on fourteenth of March, twenty twenty-three. I'd just like to just make a motion to update this as a due date. We stayed with everything. It just put on there that was due, not due. I believe you've got any packet. I think when we had some of our meetings, one on one, one area that we talked about in the Code of Ethics, that's number two. Uphold the integrity and independence of board members' office. And that's just something when I went through it and we spoke in one-on-one, that's what I brought up. The whole complaint I ask is that when you update this, put it down, or still by not somebody get it to make that into a motion. There are many more.
Chairman, I'd like to make motion to be adopted, reversion of the Macon County Board of Commissioner Code of Ethics.
Well, please, you said the plan, 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 or send the well, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Do you second it? Okay.
And and what can be discussed? Screw, it's pretty low now. If their board of education, I saw that they also were, they, they're code of ethics. All in favor?
Mr. Chairman, listen.
Talk about ethics. Ethics is a very broad. Ethics, integrity, honesty, values, proof, trust, sincerity, morality, honor, leadership, respect, loyalty, law-abiding, fairness, compassion. That's a big heavy. And I think it is absolutely critical that we as five board members of Ruddness County are able to take every one of these and lean on each other. That's, that's just, that's, that's my take on this. And.
And I think it's a guide for us. As far as bringing back the. The thing that worked out my genes was. Do you need further discussion? All in favor?
What happens for a zero?
Let's see back there. Discussion and consideration of the Veterans Battlefield of North Carolina County History Association, Veteran Services Director, Lee Neber. Who show?
Uh, not yet. Sorry, the.
You did. Good.
Okay. We can share. Thank you, guys, for, and ladies, for giving me a couple of minutes just to mention this. I've talked to a couple of commissioners already about this via email. So the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners has partnered with the counties and a company called One Hundred Strong Productions, and they've made a documentary called The Veterans Battlefield. Just a little background, North Carolina is home to around seven hundred thousand veterans, the eighth largest veteran population in the nation, and with the fourth largest active-duty military presence nationwide, it stands to reason that our state needs to pay special attention to issues impacting our service members. After active duty, veterans face wide-ranging challenges that can seem insurmountable. Imagine devoting formative years of your career to one tireless pursuit, and then everything that you've known comes to a halt, and you must invent a new path for yourself. This is the situation that's facing veterans. From starting new careers to navigating a complex process to obtain earned benefits, shifting mindsets, and establishing homes, it can be just too much for a person to bear. Mental and physical health suffers, unemployment, and even homelessness ensues. Yet, hope and help are alive in our counties. Veteran service officers in our communities are devoted to doing what they can to make life after the military the best it can be for our veterans. As county residents, we all have a role in helping our valued service members. The question is exactly how can we collectively turn the tide on the complicated issues facing veterans? The Veterans Battlefield is the story of our state's veterans who face wide-ranging challenges in their struggle to find purpose and hope acclimating to county life. The Veterans Battlefield highlights these challenges and how county veteran service officers and community leaders are working to support them. So basically, what I'm here to ask you about, there's counties all across the state who are holding showings of this film, I would like to have your support in doing that, looking at maybe a date, February or March. I know this is Christmas time, there's lots of stuff going on right now. I think it's super important that our community see this and understand how difficult the transition is from active-duty military to civilian life, not just that, but once they're in civilian life, how that transition just continues to be difficult. And we have veterans that serve on our board here. It's, it's super important to me because Christie and I are dealing with veterans in and out every day. I mean, we, we, we're not just service officers, we're, we're considered advocates for our veterans, and we're social workers and counselors, and we're working with No Wrong Door, finding houses in the sheriff and the jail, and, I mean, our, our reach goes way beyond those office doors. So I just think it's important for our community to know our veterans here in the community and our population. It'll be interesting to see our senses, because retirees, we have tons of military retirees that moved to the area. They're very active in the community, and I just would really like to gather your support in order to host a showing. I, you know, I'll work out the logistics as far as, like, performing arts center, fine arts center, whatever it may be, that we can do something like this, and, and with your support, and we can really advertise and, and get a good, good showing, and especially since it's presented by the North Carolina County, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners.
Tell us where, how much it costs.
All right. It shouldn't be any cost to us, yeah, hopefully, and hopefully we'll get, you know, the, the location and everything done, maybe. But I really appreciate that, and I know our veterans will, just for that recognition.
Just slide.
Thank you.
This time, I, in the general population, too, it's, it's, it's heart-wrenching. And no matter what I've talked to, have any solution, that awareness is the first step. And I think this is a very positive step. Thank you for taking on, just tell us, that's what we did. The last is just tell us.
Yes, yes, sir. I'm.
What you do for all of us.
Thank you, thank you. And can I just say real quick, as a county employee and, and a taxpayer, I do appreciate your Code of Ethics that you're gonna, you know, institute and remain to follow by at these meetings, because I'm also the vice president for the North Carolina Association of County Veteran Service Officers, which puts me in meetings with people all around the state, you know, and I was asked multiple times within the last couple of weeks, you know, what's going on in your county? And when I'm hearing those remarks, and it was embarrassing for me to reply about the, the last meeting. So I just want to say that not only as a county employee, but as a taxpayer, I'm glad that, that we're gonna get that behind us, because when I'm asked about that from other counties, it was, it was honestly, it was embarrassing. So I just wanted to say thank you for what you do, and I hope that continues to move forward, and, and I'm super special thanks to our county manager. I worked with Derek when he was an employee just like me, as far as just not, not in any leadership position, and he was just the same then as he is now, and I, for one, greatly appreciate that. Thank you.
We're agreed to disagree and respect the man.
Yes, sir.
Y'all.
Integrity. Yes, sir. Thank you.
George, proceed.
Correct, and Joe Allen had, you'll ask Joe Allen to, or I'm sorry, Joe Allen requested last, if you all would be interested in relieving yourselves of the duty to approve the release of bond on the subdivision ordinance. So chapter one fifty-nine of the Macon County Code of Ordinances is the subdivision ordinance, and when a developer creates a subdivision, they're required to post a bond for more than the amount that the interest rate is going to be. Joe's in charge of figuring out what that is going to be and making sure that they post a bond, but as it was written in the ordinance, it was the commissioners that were in charge of then releasing that bond, which was basically just rubber stamping what, what show, what the information that Joe had, because Joe was the one that approved whether the subdivision was completed or not. And so this is just removing on that step, this commissioner to prove it, and giving that authority to the, to the subdivision administrator, which is, you're saying Joe, but that's Mr. Joe Allen with the planning department. And so that, this ordinance then amend that to say, where previously said Macon County commissioners may release a portion or all of security posted, this then give that authority to the subdivision administrator, which would of course be in the position that Joe Allen. So that's the resolution that's on the table before the board.
Mr. Chairman, I make motion, we approve the recommendation change. Sir. And then you let, oh, did you say it, or did you want me to? Oh, I think I will promote you as, I'm asking for a second. Yeah. I'm taking that motion, Jerry. I just got it, that's the next thing, too. Got that one second. I thought you did two a lot ago. I, I saw. Any further discussion? Not all in favor? Raise your hand.
Motion happens for today.
We don't have to, we got four people. Let's see. A, new business, A. Okay. B, we've got that, that's Sasha and Stoll. Well, Chris coming up only, we used to leave this city here, and we've heard a lot of discussions about our last four meetings and stuff, and, you know, we're not polished politicians, kind of ditched, digging, we're each other, we're kind of landscaper. You're looking at polished politicians, you got your own crap at the period. We take a lot of air, we take a lot of gear, and sometimes our nerves get rough. Well, y'all did, we run your nerves sometimes. Over a while, we're gonna be, it's gonna be a little flare up, you just have to bear with it, that's part of the process for making salt, it's mainly, the end result is what works, we all love Macon County, and I think it works with representatives, taxpayers, and Mr. Stoll, well.
Was that a prologue to this discussion?
And Lloyd, here's, so.
Gentlemen, in your packet, I didn't break, I have given you an explanation, I'm asking that you approve a resolution to exclude from the normal purpose procedure services, engineering services for the development of a future landfill sale regarding the hydrogeological investigation of that sale in, in the exemption under for engineering services that are anticipated to be less than fifty thousand dollars. I'm happy to talk about, talk about what this is, or I'm happy to just hear a motion.
Let's go.
I, I don't want to cut anybody short or mislead, but this is, I give you a two-second verdict. This is the, this is phase three. It's upside down to how I'm usually look at it. No, no, it's not. So this is cell one, this is the, this is the active landfill sale. And this area here, denoted in this hash line, was intended to be cell two of phase three. Because of the growth that we've experienced, we are, we're, we're looking to enlarge this sale to gain more, to gain more capacity, to gain a longer life of the sale, so that we don't wind up in a situation like we're trying to avoid right now of, of having the, the head of two cells at the same time. We've, I've talked to you about that in previous meetings, the step, the other steps we're taking. The critical piece here is, one, when we, when we permit this landfill in general, there's a hydro investigation, and you see the little dots of, of well clusters. When you actually go into construction, additional wells just in this area are needed to better define bedrock and groundwater. And so we, we want to do, some of this we have to do, some of it we, we just, I want to do it, it's, I'm sure you can't see it, but there's a little knoll running here, and this original cell was, was attempting to miss that knoll, and the goal was to have the, the sump, the leachate collection system that's in service now be able to serve, to service the next cell as well. With this expansion, we've, we've crossed this knoll going this way, and we've also crossed it going this way. What we don't know and what we want to pay particular attention to is what's happening here with the underground topography and bedrock. It's, this is a transition area that we just need to know as much as we can about. If we have to put in a second sump here because we can't gravity to here, and even if we have to put a temporary sump back here and pump it into the current leachate collection system. Just, that's the way the ground. just because the way the ground lays, uh, we gotta get to all the low spots. So, that is, this is in preparation of development of phase two, no, sorry, phase three cell two. Um, but we wanna get this work done as soon as we can, uh, because this is, this is gonna be critical to the future, uh, future design and permitting. Uh, this is just a close up, you can kinda see the knoll. Uh, this is our area of concern. We, we just, we think we know what's going on there from the general survey, uh, but we wanna do a more focused survey so that we, we're clear on what's going on underground here. Now, answer any questions or hear a motion.
For the permitting process, I'm willing to agree with what the state requires on any fair. But it's because of the boxes you gotta check and be met, but it's something that they've defined different companies, but we're finding it is in.
Well, the, I mean, the, the, the company we anticipate getting a price from is, is the one that put in all the original, many of those had to be abandoned during construction, but, uh, but yes, this is, this is sort of a continuation process.
And we gotta have waste disposal and we gotta have solid waste exposure. You named the actual name?
I need you to, uh, motion to approve the resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I will like a motion to approve the resolution relating to engineering services.
Who's there a second?
I'll second that.
Chris, is that one time, you're asking for a one time approval or, uh, future fifty thousand?
No, 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 we just want to, I mean, I may have another one, but I would bring that back to you. Yeah. I look, would be a pretty good gig if I could do it once and just keep sliding through it. Uh, thank you gentlemen, and I'm not gonna excuse myself.
Real quick, I will, yeah. Chris, I'll talk, here's, you know, we, we have good employees and services they're providing, we appreciate what landfill services do, but we utilize, those others who utilize their convenience centers, they use, and those are, you know, those people are face making, they interact with people today, they even have, any other employee probably has a section of government we got. And we've talked about this, you and I talked about this privately a number of times. We started this discussion, I think some of them were making seven dollars and fifty cents a night. And now we're up to, uh, ten.
Eleven. Yeah, eleven, eleven and a quarter or somewhere in there.
That's good, I mean, that's an improvement, but still.
But not, yeah.
And I'm not one to just go out and spend money, we just heard the, uh, you know, we're forty five million dollars in fund balance, yeah. It's never funny, if he had the fund balance too, and I know he's, he's, he are with ours, take that. Yeah. But, but if you're in, uh, is the utility.
And, and tipping fees.
You go to a fast food restaurant, ordering hours fifteen, nineteen dollars an hour. And, and these guys do a good job, these things, and, uh, and, uh, this is, they should be getting some minimum wage thing that was pushed heavily, but you know, it's, I don't know, I'm just rambling there guys, and I guess being a pastor, I get that opportunity once in a while, but it bothers me that we don't take a little bit better care of them, maybe other departments I don't know about that are down in that, hey, how are we doing? Today's economy, today's economy, those people are struggling, I mean, twenty hour thing, and we set this thing up twenty five years ago and it's still structured today, just like it was there. We don't pay these people twenty hour a week, part time, without giving benefits. It's, it's a cost reduction approach that we use after twenty, how long that been going? Same company, the dumpster.
Late six ninety three. Thirty years, yeah.
Sixteen, I work there, I'm old friends, sixteen years old.
Yeah, you reduction average, I remember seeing you. What I'm just cutting them quick here is that in, I know you're into this permitting and it's worth a lot of time, but can we, between now and start the new budget next year, you bring us suggestions and I appreciate your opinion about those, those guys need to make a little bit better. You mentioned some ideally, maybe some full time people. We got Mr. Virch, he's talked about a pension thing in the past, but can we have a, a job, which was interesting last month? Either at your convenience, prior to the budget to get, prior to we start the budget.
Sure.
Is, could you give us a synopsis of what it would cost us? I think it's thirty thousand hours a year that those centers are open to a dollar an hour is thirty thousand dollars that somebody's gotta pay for.
And a dollar on my availability fee as it happens is about twenty eight thousand dollars. So, it's pretty close. We're at a hundred and eight.
Yeah, it is two hundred.
Oh, there's, we're, we're low on the, yes.
I think most reasonable people in Macon County would say, hey, they appreciate the service, those people, they have, they'll really, they'll have me, I'm able to, let me get my garbage out. Let's, let's have a discussion, open.
Happy, I'm always happy to do it and, um, like I said, I, I, I mean, you are not, we, not only have we talked about this, we've, we've, we've kinda done two permutations to get where we are now over the last five years, I guess. I would just tell the board, this is, this is now on my sheet, there's, there's a lot of, there's several variations that I have worked through in the past, you know, what if we did this, what if we did that? If any of you gentlemen, uh, have a component that, that you want me to consider, uh, as far as, you know, hours, um, you know, more pay, full time, part time, I mean, I'll, I'll put some scenarios together, but if there's a scenario that you have in mind that you would like to see, I'm happy to vet it out and, and make that part of my presentation. Yes, sir.
If you have a part time person, they work with it thirty year, anyway, to, that can be fifteen year. That makes sense, uh, the bird.
No.
Mr. Virch, I've talked about this, I'm never treated with, but you can't do that.
I will, yeah, we're part of the state's retirement, we don't make the retirement rules. Now, the, I, if you were asking me a different question, which I don't think I've ever thought of before, uh, until you just said that, you know, full time employees do have longevity benefits paid. I don't know if we could cut the, you know, we could divide twenty eighty by a thousand and say, okay, Jim, for instance, has got eighteen years, that's equivalent to about, let's just pretend he has twenty, cause that's easier math. Uh, you know, you might could look at a ten year longevity percentage bonus or something. Uh, I mean, I can, again, that's something I can put, put in my metrics of, of what I present back to y'all. Yeah.
You know, we can do.
Yeah, no, yeah. I think. Rec Park in the summer, Transit, me, I think. I think we're, I think those five departments are the, the biggies, aren't they? And, and I would be amiable and even appreciative if, uh, if Derek wanted to have those department heads form an ad hoc and, and talk about mutual. I'm not necessarily looking for policies beyond what we would have to have, cause you get yourself in trouble when you write stuff down, but, uh, but, you know, um, like Lori said, if, if it's gonna apply to everybody, I don't, I don't know, I don't know where my people stand as far as where Brent's people stand and as far as where Warren's people stand, I don't know what the playing field is like, so, um, if we could even just a couple of informal meetings, just to kinda get a baseline of, of, of what we wanna accomplish and, and what others may have already accomplished that, that I just don't know about. Sure, sure. Um, I, I appreciate the opportunity whenever it's, whenever it's pitched.
Anything we can do?
Thank you, sir.
Yes, that's. About that. As I stated earlier, Mr. Chairman, uh, in my, uh, piece there that I read to the board and the, and camp, and the county, the poll, um, I spent approximately five hours with the, um, Macon County Maintenance Department head. We rode around and identified different, uh, different properties, uh, that were in need of repair. We got to the library and, uh, upon approaching the entrance to the library, the, uh, the roof system and the walkway that is attached to the building, um, the posts on the outside have sunk approximately five to six inches. The plate against the building, the bolts have pulled out of it, which, um, if you look at the sprinkler system, uh, that's on the outside, uh, it has shifted to the point where that is touching, uh, the sprinkler system is touching the light fixtures, uh, the beams, the light fixtures are embedding into the beams. So, that needs immediate attention, um, from this county. And once you enter the library in the main entrance and you look in the peak of ceiling, on both sides of the peak, about a foot or so on each side is black from mold, which tells me that somehow or another the bridge cap of that roof system is holding water and the, the wood ceiling on the inside is absorbing that water and turning to mold. Leaking that, um, and going over into the children's section, they had buckets and stuff underneath, uh, sections of ceiling, ceiling tiles out, um, not sure if it's condensation or the roof system is leaking, um, but there are many, many, many ceiling tiles that are, um, out of ceiling, covered in mold, um, and then there are other sections of that building that the roof, um, is leaking as well. So, that is way beyond anything, um, that Macon County Maintenance Department is, uh, capable, I shouldn't say capable, but I think it's way out of their scope. And so I believe moving forward, um, it could be a structural engineer, um, that will have to be hired to see where we go to here. I believe at this point, that roof system and the drive through and the entry and stuff is salvageable. I believe it can be, um, raised back up and reattached to the building, um, but that's for a structural engineer to, to decide. So, I'm asking this board tonight, um, where do we go to here, but that if it continues on the path that it is, then we're going to lose the entire area of that library.
Yeah, when I looked at it, I went out and I couldn't, I mean, what concerns me is there is a liability issue there. This building is actually separated from the main library and the outside is settling, I mean, it's settling up where it's detached, the gutters, all the gutters are leaking, snow captured all over the roof. I'm saying it's gonna fall, but we've identified there is a definitely, uh, there is some liability, I mean, this thing is going down, it's just a matter of when, but, uh, hopefully it's not soon, but, yeah, we got, this needs to be addressed.
And if you don't address it, we know it, it's a lot of damage, you know, it's kind of your ADA.
You know, whatever, I don't know.
Uh, I don't know, again, uh, Mr. Shields, thank you, this is the first I've heard about this. Um, uh, tonight is the first time I've heard about it, so I think, you know, we'll, we'll take a look at it and, um, you know, we need to, if we can get evaluated, we'll get evaluated. I would, uh, request, you know, if we're gonna have a structural engineer come out and look at it, that, that does come with a cost, so, um, just be aware of that, we might have to catch back up on the backend. But again, be happy to, uh, get that underway, I know we've had that group looked at a couple of times now and, um, I'll see where we're at, I'll assess what we, cause it was fault in installation, uh, we ran into a, a distance where we couldn't, money expired, so I think we're, we'll, I'll check it back to Jack. No, I mean, if it, if, you know, whatever money we get into, um, we can find it within the budget and we'll get you to, uh, we'll document that, bring it, bring it back to the board's expense fee.
John, I apologize, I've got something else to back service.
What else is there with the law, or?
Amy added, service weapon.
Sheriff.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
So, um, the sheriff has requested permission to award Sergeant Tony Harper his duty weapon upon his, is he captain, sorry, captain, uh, Tony Harper, his duty weapon upon his official retirement from the Macon County Sheriff's Department, planned for this last four days, December the twenty ninth, twenty twenty three. And General Statute twenty one eighty seven dot two A outlines what must be done by the governing board to award the service weapon to a retiring officer. The officer must turn in their weapon at retirement and then the board of commissioners could declare the weapon a surplus and then the retired officer would pay the county the amount set by the board, which customarily this board has been a dollar. And then the employee would be awarded the weapon. And, um, the weapon that Mr. Harper has is a Glock Model seventeen, Gen five. Add anything to that?
You test on everything, that's, starting your search, again, I guess the least we could do. It would have recently done it, um, last year for the three other officers, I'll be getting one of them.
What's your number?
I'll say it to you.
Further discussion? All in favor of your hand?
Four zero.
William John.
Chairman, I'd like most of the, for the single gen at this time. Say it. Lori always gets said in there. It's over there.
Let's see.
I didn't pass those board there.
So we have a motion to go into closed session pursuant to 143-318.11a4 to discuss economic development, and as well as to negotiate a position as a real property under section five. Make that motion pursuant to that statute code. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, would you repeat that? Repeat that, yes, make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to 143-318.11a4 and five.
Say it.
Who made the motion? We goshed it.
Here, don't hit him.
Trying to write down all your numbers, Eric.
There won't be any action to disprove, so if y'all want to hang around, I mean, give me a break, we're not going to collapse, say you're buying a blue fire, hail bridge or anything.